I'm going to call this meeting to order at 6:01 on January 26, 2023. If I could ask Councilmember Jane Taft to leave us in a flag, so you please.
All right, please, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Karpinski Costa.
President.
Councilmember Lopez Taft.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Daniels.
Here.
Mayor Schaefer.
Here. Next item, please.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is capable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. This meeting is closed caption and livestreamed at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, January 30 at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14. This meeting can also be viewed on the city's YouTube channel.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is approval of agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Approval by Daniels, second by Middleton. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Next item, please.
Next item is comments by city council members and regional board updates.
All right, let's start with Councilmember Middleton. What have you been up to?
I have no comments at this time, thank you.
Okay. Okay, let's go to Councilmember Karpinski Costa.
We're still trying to get organized. Only thing I've gotten so far is invitations to meetings where they will fill us in with what goes on, so nothing's happened yet.
Councilmember Jane Taft, what have you been up to?
All right, well, I've been up to a few things. I was invited to speak at my neighborhood association. Thank you Kathy and Board for inviting me to do so. I always have a good time at our neighborhood association meeting. We also attended the League of Cal Cities New Mayors and City Council Training Downtown. Several of us attended, and it was like drinking through a fire hose, as you can imagine, but very good information and met quite a few colleagues across Northern California. And finally, personally, I want to say a thank you to Regina Cave and our General Services staff. I've been driving around our streets a lot, and they've done a fantastic job with our Main Street potholes, and I just really want to thank you and your team, Regina, for that. That's all I have.
Councilmember Daniels, Vice Mayor Daniels, sorry.
Thank you very much. Yeah, just a few things. Got to attend the Citrus Heights Chamber Installation Dinner thingamajiggy a little while back, and if you've never had the opportunity to go, and if the same person is going to emcee the event, you'll want to go next year. It's worth the price of admission. You know, our chief, Mr., Chief Turkot back there is quite the guy, quite the guy on the mic, and he's worth every penny of admission, so if you get a chance, please go. And it was a great event. I didn't get to stay the whole event, but fun time and some good food, some good laughs, and so put it on your calendar for next year this time, and hopefully you can go. Airborne meeting today, not a whole lot out of it, other than, and I got to be gentle here, so there are proposals to possibly, from the EPA, to change the particulate matter threshold and make it 13% to 22% more stringent. And I just don't know where all this goes at some point, you know, eventually you probably won't be able to breathe out, so it's just, it's incredible. RT Board, a couple of things going on with RT. If you happen to be somebody who takes the light rail, maybe from anywhere around Folsom or Rancho Downtown, whatever, the 59th Street Station will be closed February 4th and 5th for construction, and that will impact the Gold Line light rail. There is a new app coming, and it's "When's the Next Bus Coming" app. So instead of being one of those people that stand at the bus stop and look down the street like we all do if we're waiting for the bus, you'll actually be able to go onto an app, and it's interactive, and it'll have a little icon, and you can see that the little bus coming down the streets, so you won't have to look for the bus. So it's called Bus Tracker, and you can probably find it on RT's website or something like that, but you won't have to be one of those people that keeps looking down the street like, where's the bus? Today I had the wonderful opportunity to meet with Mr. Lee and, I believe, his assistant. The mayor and I met with them, and, you know, what a nice guy, what a great guy, what a genuine guy. There's a lot of things that go on with RT, and a lot of money that goes on with RT, and it was very nice to be able to hear somebody talk genuine about not only the aspects of a service, but also, I think, I feel, a concern for making sure the taxpayer dollar is spent the right way. And so, just a really good guy, and hopefully more meetings to come in the future, and I believe that's it.
Great. All right, guess it's my turn. So, very first thing, I spoke at the Area 3 meeting. It was very well attended. It was really nice to see familiar faces there. I thank you, Mr. Lego Mercino, for inviting me to speak there, and I really enjoyed that. So any of the other neighborhood associations, this is your opportunity to reach out to me, I'd be happy to come to speak. So I also attended the League of California Cities Conference. I thought it was really entertaining and enjoyable. Then I also did attend the Chamber Installation Dinner, which is really nice. It was really a good, fun event. So I did appoint myself to Sacramento Area Council of Governments, or SA-COG. We had our first meeting there. It was really great, so all the SA-COG Board meetings are supposed to be attended in person. So I did that down at the SA-COG headquarters downtown, and I was appointed to the Innovation and Policy Committee. So I'm excited about serving there and learning more about the other governments and all the challenges they are faced with as well. So, and I also did meet with Henry Lee and the Vice Mayor, and a little bit of a concern that he has is that we were one of the first cities to adopt Smart Ride several years ago when Steve Miller was the mayor, and Smart Ride funding is about to expire in June. So we're going to be grappling with how do we continue to keep Smart Ride going? And so that's one of the items that we're certainly going to be looking at, and how do we keep that funded? So anyhow, with that, that's all I have. We have the next item, please.
The next item is public comment, and if you wish to address the council during the meeting, please fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself. If participating via Zoom, you may use the raise hand function or star nine from a telephone, and I will unmute you when it is time to speak. Speakers are limited to five minutes each. When your name is called, please step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. We do have one public comment speaker card for tonight, and I also have a couple of written public comments for Agenda Item 12 for later on, and I'll read those at that time.
Great, great, and I'll be calling Kathy Morris to the podium to speak, but before we get there, I just want to kind of remind you of the, this is during the public comment. People wishing to make a comment, please feel welcome. I know that Kathy, you speak here often, and you should be pretty comfortable at this point. Thank you. And we're all, all of us on this board have sat, have been where you are and spoken to the council, so we're all among friends and neighbors here. So you have, you'll have nine, or sorry, five minutes to speak on non-agenda items, and so take your time, and, but the Brown Act prohibits us from engaging with you. So we can't ask you any questions, or if you ask any, if you ask us any questions, we really can't address you. So with that, if you will proceed, Ms. Morris, I appreciate it.
Mayor and members of the council, I am Kathy Morris. I am a 25-year resident of Citrus Heights. I'm currently the president of Area 7, 8, 9, Jason, but I'm here speaking on behalf of myself, not of the group, okay? So I don't want to confuse that. At the last city council meeting, there was a discussion about creating, excuse me, creating a Citrus Heights School Board. I completely agree that our schools in Citrus Heights need some help, need some attention in the areas of academics, in the areas of safety, and certainly in the areas of maintenance. However, isn't that why we just had an election to put some more people on the school board? Several weeks back, a few months back, we were very active in trying to expand the San Juan Unified School District from five members to seven, the concept being that we wanted some more local representation. We did it, it got done, and we just recently elected two members. It seems to me that we should give our new members time to get their job done, and that's where we should focus. Additionally, we all know the city is very capable, our city staff is very capable, they've got a lot of work to do, and they do it. They do it very well. The concept, the idea of having them to be sidetracked in doing the research necessary for this, the time, energy, and money that is required to do this research, seems to me it's diverting them from the job they're doing today. Doesn't seem to me to be a good use of their time when there's so many other things going on, and then we have the new school board people. And speaking of cost, the schools in our district seem to be a little old. They're not quite as old as I am, but they're 50 years and so. Maintenance is important. It seems like we should let the district that has been responsible for it and perhaps not performed fix it. They're the ones that should take care of that. That needs our focus, not our funding, and that's the bottom line as far as I'm concerned. We've got people on the city council, excuse me, people on this now San Juan Unified School District Board that we know and that we like and that we trust. It's our job, I think, to make sure they do their job, and then we need to make sure that we focus on our communications with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any raised hands or any other comments?
I do not see any raised hands, and I do not have any other comments.
With that, may I have the next item, please?
The next item is consent calendar items four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine.
Move approval of consent calendar?
Second.
Okay, approval by, move approval by Daniels, the second by Taft. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next item, please.
Next item is the regular calendar item number 10. The subject is Approval of Economic Development Support Fund Grant Request by the Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving a $14,848 grant to the Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce for the Economic Development Support Fund Part 1.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to comment that the, our committee approved this as a committee. Do you know that?
I'm sorry, what was that?
I thought I had this right. I'm still training. That Brett and I, as the Finance Committee approved this recommendation.
Good evening, Mayor Schaefer and members of city council. I am Megan Huber, Economic Development and Community Engagement Director. We're here this evening to review a request from our Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce for an annual sponsorship and grant money to implement economic development activities through our Economic Development Support Fund. I wanted to take the opportunity, given new and returning faces of city council, to do a quick refresh on the economic development programs that the city of Citrus Heights offers to businesses, business associations, and similar. So we'll do a quick overview, and then we'll review the grant request from the Chamber of Commerce. Diane Ebbett, CEO of the Citrus Heights Chamber, is here to make some comments as well, and then we'll open for any questions. So the city of Citrus Heights is really fortunate to be able to offer a pretty robust toolbox of economic development programs to businesses and business associations, and I'm going to do a quick review here. The first one that we're talking about is the program that the request is applicable to this evening, and that's what we refer to as the Economic Development Support Fund Part 1. The purpose of this program is to provide sponsorships and grants that promote commerce and increase business activity to achieve economic development goals. Now, I think it's important to know that eligible projects are not necessarily about directly increasing job base. This is not a jobs incentive program, rather it's to fund economic development-related activities, marketing, sponsorships, and similar. We also offer the Economic Development Support Fund Part 2, which consists of two parts. First, it offers a design assistance program, which is complimentary design assistance to help businesses and property owners of existing commercial and office buildings create plans to redevelop and prime for new business. The second part of the Part 2 program is a sign support program, and that program provides 50% match grants, up to $5,000 each, city and applicant, which makes up a $10,000, up to $10,000 project for signage improvements. Lastly, we also offer our Activate Auburn program, which is a great toolbox of complimentary design consulting, potential fee waivers, and storefront matching grants, and we're really proud of some of the successes that you see in the photos before and afters of recent projects. So back to the Economic Development Support Fund Program Part 1 and the requests from our Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce. As detailed in the staff report, they have requested $14,848, and that is comprised of two things. First, it's comprised of $10,000 related to renewing our annual chairman's circle sponsorship. The benefits of that sponsorship are detailed both in their application as well as the staff report, and it is consistent with everything that we've experienced in previous years, partnerships through co-branding, features in chamber luncheons and events, and really partnerships that span across projects as needed. We like to follow the help where it needs to be together. The second aspect of, the second component of that number is a little less than $5,000, and that is the annual cost to rent the Citrus Heights Community Center to host their monthly chamber luncheons. And this was a new development last year. If you've attended a chamber luncheon any time before last year, there are some comments that are always made that the Citrus Heights Chamber luncheons happened outside of Citrus Heights, and there was a lot of desire to want to bring that within city limits. So being able to utilize the community center to be able to do that was the solution. It's one of the only venues, if not the only venue, that can consistently offer that size of facility to host luncheons, and it's another great co-branding partnership opportunity. So the review process for this program, staff reviews the application using the below criteria that you see there, making sure that it fits the required guidelines, and we make a recommendation to the city council finance committee. This was reviewed by the finance committee on January 16, and they recommended approval, and now it comes before city council for a final recommendation and approval. And with that, I would like to invite Diane Ebbett, CEO of the Citrus Heights Chamber, up. She has a short presentation that will illustrate our continuing partnership and the benefits that the chamber sponsorship provides. And Amy, I'm going to do a quick switch. If you can support me on, that would be great. And Diane, I'll do my best to keep up with you, but feel free to indicate advancing the slides.
Okay, hold it right there. Mayor Schaefer, councilmembers, Diane Ebbett with the Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce, thank you for giving me the opportunity to apply for the Economic Development Support Grant. In 2022, as Megan stated, was the first year in a long time that the chamber was able to bring the chamber lunches back to the city, and it was because of this grant. Last year, we did ask for $14,848, and I'm asking for this amount again. I have a short PowerPoint that I would like to show the council. It will show the chamber's achievements for 2022. Okay, next slide. These are a few of the members in that we brought on last year, and I want to just make a note that, first of all, Future Honda, they did host our Best of Citrus Heights event. They opened, and they immediately said, yes, we'd love to have you host that event at our place, so that was wonderful. We also have four members on there, such as M. Qua Bank, Golden One, Reichert's Funeral Home, and Les Schwab. Those are all renewing members. They had not been with us for a while. We reached out to them, and they did review their membership. Okay, Megan, next. These are some of the programs that we have started up this, in 2022, and the first one is a member video interview. Megan, if you can just play a very short clip of that, the top, yes. Now, mind you, I wrote, edited, produced.
Hi, I am Diane Ebbett, and I am the executive director for the Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce, and today we are here with Luke from Valoffo Corner, right here off of Sunrise Boulevard.
That's good.
Welcome, Luke, to the Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you. That is just an example of the many interviews that we do do. In fact, Councilmember Jane Taft has done a few of those herself for the chamber. Then we have the little black box at the bottom, if you want to play that one. That's good. And basically what this does is I go into a business, and the business can ask me to come in, or I will just walk up to a business and ask if I can go in, and all I do is I just film the inside of their business, what they're doing, how they're doing it. We don't really talk, it's just a way of spot highlighting that business, and that is our Love Local campaign. And Love Local, I don't know if you remember, but was brought, it was a partnership between the city and the chamber in 2020, right after the shutdowns, and so we now are continuing this, the Love Local campaign. We also have a restaurant program that what we do is I go to a restaurant and I pay them $10 for like a coupon. We sell it for $15, and they redeem that coupon at the restaurant, and the restaurant does, I guess, want to eat the $5, but they know they're going to be spending a lot more money in that restaurant than that $5. The next slide.
Hi, I am Diane Ebbett, and I am here.
And this is our city partnership, and Megan and I, Economic Development, we meet every other week or every other Monday, as often or as many times as we can. Sometimes schedules get in the way, but we pretty much meet every other week. And just to go over what's going on in Citrus Heights. I am the chair of ABBA, Auburn Boulevard Business Association. As most of you know, Rich Hales stepped down, and so I am now the chair. We participate in Connect Citrus Heights. I was on the, involved with the PIT meetings, but I'm no longer. We did hold a reception for the State of the City address, which was wonderful and very well attended. And again, like we have stated, we partner with the city for our monthly lunches to bring back to Citrus Heights. Next slide. Some of the events that we held in 2020, and we held the Community Appreciation Awards, and that's where, again, both mayor and vice mayor attended and commented on the event. And that was held on January 21 of last year, but then I want to point out Brews and the Burbs. Kathy Lynn had an issue, and she really needed some volunteers, so she reached out to the chamber, and we stepped up, and we really helped them out at Brews and the Burbs. And as I had said before, Future Ford, they helped us with our Best of Citrus Heights. We are bringing this back also this year, and that is city manager Ash Finney, and I did a fireside chat at the chamber luncheon. It was a great time. This year, we held a trade, it was small, but we hope to grow it at Green Acres Nursery in the morning in July. It was a beautiful morning, we had some people attend, a number of booths, and it was just, again, an opportunity to highlight Green Acres Nursery. And then again, we did do the State of the City reception that we held right here at the community center. Next slide. This is the important one, I think, and this is where we paid the restaurants to cater our lunches. And some of these restaurants that participated was Boston Pizza, Panda Express, Yummy Tummy, Panera, and what we did is we sent an RFP out to all of them and said, this is what we would like, but this is also how much we are spending. So we didn't want them to think that they wanted us, that we were asking for this food. We paid each and every one of them, and basically it was come in, drop off, and then we cleaned up afterwards, and it worked very, very well. Boston Pizza especially is having a hard time, and so they reached out and said, we would love to do it, and it really helped them. In fact, because of that, we also held another event at their location, and that was where five chambers came together and spent lunch there. Next slide. Some of the community involvement, we made donations to Single Moms Strong. I'm a member of the Rotary Club. I sit on the Heart Board of Directors. We did participate in PAL with the Trunk or Treat Toys for the Troops Kids. We participated with Miracle Forest, and we just did a number of things participating in the community. And then we have a new surprise for all of you. Every business in Citrus Heights, whether it's a storefront or whether it's a home-based business, will now be a member of the Citrus Heights Chamber. It's a special Love Local Chamber membership, and they will receive advocacy with that. They will receive the e-news letter, and they will receive a listing on our website, and they will also receive a listing and our directory that we will put out again next year. Do you have any questions? Thank you for supporting the Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce.
All right. Any questions or comments from council? Now would be the good time to say.
Now's a good time to say that the Finance Committee met and approved the request. I also forgot to tell you that I did go to the chamber dinner with you guys, and it was, Diane, the best dinner you guys have ever thrown, because I used to go to them when I was on the council before, by far was super. You did a great job at that dinner, and the chief was a tremendous emcee. So I... So I'm for it.
Ready?
Yes.
You know, we have to remember Citrus Heights is a sales tax-driven community city. And not all the businesses in the chamber are producing sales tax, but us supporting the chamber supports businesses, and that's what makes that work. And so this amount of money is just, for me, a minimal amount of money that we're showing that we're supporting the chamber, we're supporting businesses, we're doing what needs to be done to make cities thrive in Citrus Heights. And so I'm very happy to support it. And I think that it's just one of just a few things that we should be doing to show our support for the chamber. Thank you, Diane.
Councilmember Middleton, do you have any comment?
Yes, Diane, you and the chamber staff and the Board of Directors have done a really great job this past year of really making sure there's that community activation. And I just think back all the way back to 2020, when you did that concert in the parking lot at the mall, right? That was so ingenuity and creativity to make sure that our businesses are heard, supported, and doing what needs to be done in our community. And I deeply appreciate that work.
Thank you.
Councilmember Taff?
I have to echo your sentiments, Councilmember Middleton. I have been very involved in the chamber. And there's so much value that you don't see in the public, you know, the advocacy especially. I was invited to participate at a state-level advocacy event. And that's where you really see the chamber shine. And I had not known that particular part of the chamber activities where we really serve to protect business interests in the local area. So I definitely am very interested in supporting this.
So I have one more comment really quickly, and I'm kind of, I'm just kind of doing the math here. The $4,884 for the, for the community center luncheons, that's only about $400 per luncheon, which is pretty darn reasonable. And I'm just curious, is that a discounted rate already for the council or for the chamber? Is that the kind of the standard rate for?
You know, we do have different rates for like nonprofits, and so it may represent one of those discounted rates.
Okay, great.
Do you have your lunch in one of the side rooms or in the big hall? Yeah, that's kind of what we used to charge the school district to have meetings there.
We do it in the south room. So it's south A and B.
And it's not the food, that's just the rent, right?
Right, right, yeah. And then we charge for the food, yeah.
Great. So all, do we have all comments in? May I have a motion, please?
Move that we pass a resolution, the City Council, the City of Citrus Heights, California, approving $14,848 grant to the Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce from the Economic Development Support Fund, Part One.
Second.
All right. I have a first by Daniels, a second by Karpinski-Costa. All those in favor? Do we want to do, can we do it just on all of those in favor? All those in fair?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Next item, please.
Next item, please.
Next item is regular calendar, item number 11. The subject is Authorization for Issuance of an RFP for Professional Services Related to Consideration of Potential Annexation Areas. The recommendation is to authorize the city manager to issue a request for proposals for consultant support to evaluate the fiscal impact or benefits and community support outreach for the four potential annexation areas.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Casey Kempner, our Community Development Director here tonight. Going to give you, we've talked about this recently. Going to give you a brief overview of what we're talking about today. Am I good to go, Amy? So back in May of last year, the council strategic planning, council directed staff to present the council with options to consider potential annexation areas. And then back in September, at the council meeting, we had an overview of LAFCO and what an annexation process looks like. We had the Executive Director from LAFCO come attend and provide some insights. And at that time, the council directed staff to proceed with the annexation work plan that was presented. Just a reminder of the areas that were being considered is Roseville Point, here on the northwest side of the city, the Fair Oaks and Madison intersection, which is on the southeast corner of the city, the Dewey Drive area on the southern side of the city. And last but not least, the Greenback Gateway, which is on the western side of the city. We also had a little bit of a conversation with the council on being strategic and how we do these. And so the RFP is written in a way to allow us to have a dialogue with the selected consultant to see what makes sense fiscally for the city and is feasible to provide us benefits and make sure it makes sense for us as we're diving deeper into these. So there's a little bit of flexibility. There'll be a bit of an iterative process that we can massage these areas a little bit as we go through the process. So that, again, a recap of that, what that work plan looks like is a strategic review of those four areas, allowing us to start the dialogue with Sacramento County. Also, an outreach component where we work with the properties that we're considering to take the temperature on what their thoughts are on being annexed into the city, as well simultaneously preparing a fiscal impact analysis to understand if there's costs or benefits from the annexation. And then we'll report back to the city council with those findings. So we're anticipating releasing the RFP tomorrow, if the council agrees with that tonight. We just interviewed the selected firms in March. The contract we'd bring back before you with a funding authorization in April. We estimate the work would take from about May to December right now. It's just a ballpark. And once we meet with those, the selected firms will know a little bit better. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. We're just kind of looking for an affirmative, yes, let's go ahead and release the RFP tomorrow.
Councilmember Middleton, questions? Councilmember Jane Karpinski-Costa?
One question I had, Casey, is if those sections, those four, that one of them I know has none, I believe, and the others have some residents, do they get a chance to vote on their annexation? Or do you know?
They do, yeah.
Or is that something they'll come up with? So they could, we could say, we want you, and they could say, we don't want it?
Yeah, there's a, there is a point, but that would become after the scope of work. So our anticipated point right now is just to test the waters. And then there's a formal process that would take place around, and then those folks would have an opportunity to say yea or nay as part of that.
Okay.
Okay, Councilmember Jane Taff, do you have a comment?
No.
Questions?
Thank you.
Vice Mayor? Any comments or questions?
Go faster.
Go faster, okay. So with that, are there any public comment? Nope. No public comment on this item? Any, no questions or additional comments? All right, so may I have a motion?
I would move that we authorize the city manager to issue a request for proposals for consultant support to evaluate the fiscal impact or benefits and community support outreach for four potential annexation areas, as indicated in the staff report.
And all second. So a motion by Daniels, second by Schaefer. May I have a, do we need to do a roll call vote on this? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next item, please.
Next item is item number 12. The subject is Patriotic Event Considerations Professional Fireworks. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving and not to exceed allocation of $80,000 of American Rescue Plan Act funds for a patriotic community event in recognition of Independence Day and finding the event categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Okay.
Well, good evening, Mayor Schaefer, Vice Mayor Daniels, members of the City Council, Ashley Finney, your city manager. I'm going to handle this item. I've been involved in a lot of the communications and discussions on this as we prepared this for your consideration. So I, most efficient if I just do the presentation for our team on behalf of the team, but it's certainly been a wider team that's been involved as we've been considering the patriotic event. Just a little overview of the presentation. First, we're going to talk a little bit about why are we talking about this? You know, some background on how we've come to discuss a patriotic event for your consideration. We'll talk about potential event scope and then ultimately funding considerations. So the background on this, coming out of the focus area work plan, working with the city council in the community, we developed a focus area work plan that really was put forward to allow us to advance in certain areas that are of interest to the community. Community image, a lot of work's been being done there with the beautification crew, as well as other implementation measures that we've been pushing forward with. Economic development, community connection, infrastructure maintenance. So as this council knows, over the course of the last year, we've had a number of items on these four topics come before you. And so this is part of that community connection piece. And as we've come out of the isolation of the pandemic, it's been important to have events where the community can come together again and celebrate one another and celebrate Citrus Heights. So this is in line with that, the idea behind a patriotic event. If we can go to the next slide, please. And first, the specific on it, in our current six-month strategic objectives that the councils adopt, and this comes from Strategic Planning Retreat. You can see the highlighted area speaks to exploring feasibility costs, logistics, and options for a patriotic event and present those. Now, you'll notice when? We had that at the April 2023 City Council meeting. A little bit about why this has accelerated to this meeting here tonight is as we were doing our work and feasibility around different options for the city council to consider relative to a patriotic event. Naturally, with a patriotic event, fireworks come into mind. Talking to a professional fireworks expert, they informed us that if that is something the city council wanted to consider as part of a patriotic event, you've got to get your order in in the first part of February. And so that's hence why we accelerated that, because we didn't, as a staff, if the council was interested in having a fireworks show associated with a patriotic event, we didn't want that opportunity to be foreclosed because we waited until April to bring it forward. If the council wanted to talk about this, we wanted to give you that opportunity to do so. And so that's why it's here tonight. Patriotic event considerations, starting a new patriotic event. For a new event, you really want to kind of have almost like a year of planning if you're going to go ahead and kick off a new event. We, as a team, talked about what's realistic to execute on this year around the Fourth of July. And we brought that forward tonight, some considerations on that. But as far as planning considerations, and I think in the past, certainly, I know that there's a lot of celebrated events. Previously, there was a Sunrise Mall fireworks show, that was one event. Red, White, and Blue, which is certainly a patriotic event as well, but I know that was also, my understanding, part of a celebration of cityhood as well. Those were two events that I'd heard a lot about in the community and a lot of nostalgia for bringing a patriotic event back. But to do something like a parade, for instance, I'd say something like that. You'd want to have a year of planning to work with our service clubs and neighborhoods to figure out, you know, what that could look like. But certainly, there's something we could execute on this year. And one of those things that we're putting forward would certainly have musical performances, food and beverage. And the question tonight, we've got a lot of planning still to do, but the question tonight before the council is if you'd like to have a professional fireworks show associated with that event, we would need to learn that this evening because we'd have an order deadline to put forward in early February. I'd say too, on this patriotic event, you know, the first year, it's not going to be perfect. It's getting something new started. But it's something in the second year, we get better at it. In the third year, we've got it down pretty well. So this would be an event that I think could grow and be refined in the years to come. So I just wanted to highlight that, if we can continue here. So for the potential 2023 event scope that we feel could be executed this year, we'd look to hold it on the evening of either Friday, June 30th, or Saturday, July 1st. Where that will have to do a little bit with some of our vendor availability and who we would need in order to execute on an event like this. We considered a number of different sites in our analysis on where would be the best place to hold a patriotic event, especially if we're going to look to refine it in future years. And our local control here is the City Hall campus. And it's a great campus. We've held a number of events here. We've had the tree lighting event here. We've had Public Works in the park and Van Maron Park. I understand the 20th anniversary Pablo Cruz played at Van Maron Park, and that was very successful. We have met with, if the fireworks show is part of this, we have met with a professional fireworks expert and evaluated this site. And we'll speak more to some of those specifics here momentarily. And, you know, we considered other sites too that were spoken to in the staff report. Rush Park, we talked about them all, and it kept coming back to here. We control it, we have street controls that we can do, we can crowd control here better than some other locations. And from a visibility standpoint, if the fireworks were part of it, we have an opportunity to have a viewing area with proper setbacks. Musical stage, we'd have set up in Van Maron Park. From a parking consideration, no sites are perfect, but we do have our parking field here at City Hall. We also have our parking at the police station, community center. But certainly, we would look to irrespective of if there were fireworks or not, for any event here, we would want to approach some of our community partners that there are a number of large parking fields around here. You know, whether it's some of the dignity properties, Sam's Club, Costco, Stock Ranch. So from all directions, almost, there's parking fields that you could walk in from a short distance or have a short shuttle to get to the location. Certainly, food and beverage can be part of that. If the fire, professional fireworks show is desired by the council to be part of the celebration, we've talked to the fireworks expert. The show would begin around 9:30 or 9:40 to ensure that there's proper darkness to have the full effect. And the show would last about 20 minutes. The estimated cost is $60,000 to $80,000. And I want to just clarify, that's not all fireworks. The cost for traffic control, the cost to have a musical performance to set up a stage, costs with any event, you're going to have some of those costs in there. So there's a number of costs that are ancillary to, you know, having any festival. So any event, you're going to have some of those costs. If we can go to the next slide. Talking a little bit about some of the site specifics here. You can see the City Hall campus that would just be on the south end of this exhibit. You can see there's a blue circle there. And so we have a vacant lot that the council's familiar with that's directly north of our built City Hall campus where our parking areas and courtyard are. That area, and talking to the fireworks expert that I will note, does the Rancho Cordova show, has done 49er games, the Wright team, also Super Bowl, has done shows at Disneyland. So a very, a true professional in this area. He did evaluate this site. And the launch area would be near our City Hall here. We'd have that vacant land area to be a buffer, and he would size the fireworks appropriately for the area that we have. The viewing area would be Van Maron Park, as well as you can see the areas in pink. Those would be roads that we would close for the event. But important to note that the neighborhoods that are adjacent would still have access points to get in and out of their neighborhood. But those closed roadways, they would provide some safety buffer areas. But then as you get to the roundabout and you go directly north towards Van Maron Park, you can see there's like a short segment there. We would also be able to get some additional capacity for people to set up chairs and things of that nature in a safe viewing area. You can see the darker green rectangle is a stage for the musical performance. So imagine the monument at Van Maron Park. It would be maybe over the top of that or just right next to it. So in the early evening, when folks are arriving to set up, we'd have a musical performance and, you know, kind of have a lively atmosphere for people to enjoy prior to the fireworks show. And then ultimately, the fireworks show would start at the appropriate time if that is part of this festival. You know, fireworks show considerations, I mean nostalgic patriotic community events. Certainly, I'm sure we've all experienced them, you know, have all enjoyed them in the past, or maybe, maybe, maybe we have or maybe we haven't. Not everyone enjoys fireworks. But certainly, there's some nostalgia there for community. It is an opportunity to bring community members together for display that they otherwise couldn't have. They can't do these at home, and nor should they. They'd be put on by professionals. I will say, some of the negative aspects of fireworks that we hear about is sometimes with people that are suffering from a post-traumatic stress event related to combat, you know, that noise can be unwelcome, impact on noise of animals as well. So, you know, you hear, you hear pros and cons. So we wanted to make sure to speak to those. And then logistics and costs, certainly, that's something that we've evaluated. There is a cost associated with having community events, and there's a cost associated with having fireworks. But I want to just point out again, that total number includes logistics-related costs as well, which would be there for any event that we hold. It is important to note that the council has received, we have received a number of public comments to the council that there's a packet that's been distributed to. I know that the council's had an opportunity to see these as they've come through, but I wanted to. to, to see these as they've come through, but I wanted to note that a number of the comments were voicing concern about, you know, the, the cost and, you know, are there other things that we could be spending money on relative to, say, for instance, pothole repair or infrastructure, things of that nature. Those comments are there at the day as for you. If we can go to the next slide. ARPA funding consideration. So as I pointed out in the staff report on this, the American Rescue Plan Act is proposed to fund the community event for the patriotic event. It's not in our current budget, so it would be something that we'd be looking to use the ARPA funding for. And the final rules for ARPA, one of the major provisions or the final rule is there was an allowance for jurisdictions to use up to $10 million of ARPA funding for any government service that would traditionally be provided. So, community events certainly would fit that category. But, if we can go to the next slide. Our council had given specific feedback to deploy the Citrus Heights ARPA funds in a manner that goes directly into the community and toward community priorities. So rather than just allocating that $10 million back to the general fund, we've been very transparent with the community and based on the council's direction, kind of come forward with each request that really kind of hits at those community priorities. And you can see this table, which was included in the staff report, lays out a lot of those ARPA expenditures that we've done to date, certainly, restoring public safety staffing to pre-prints, the largest expenditure. We've had the beautification crew that folks have been hearing a lot about. We had COVID recovery grants. We've got the community block party trailer that you'll be hearing more about the rollout soon. We have some infrastructure items, some economic development pursuits associated with the grants that were pursued for Sunrise Mall, as well as some infrastructure, you know, technology improvements as well. So the whole list is here. The original award was nearly $15.7 million. You can see the allocations to date. The $80,000 is proposed in this table, and if the $80,000 was approved, we'd still be at about approximately $5.7 million of remaining ARPA fund balance that would need to be allocated by December 2024 by December 2026. One of the things I wanted to note here is this proposed patriotic event is estimated to be approximately half of 1% of the city's total ARPA allocation. And one thing also I wanted to note is if this is desired to be an annual event, a patriotic event, certainly, we would want to talk to the city council about budgeting that in the next two-year budget cycle. So we could, if we start something, we could continue So with that, my recommendation is, should the city council desire to have a professional fireworks show as part of the patriotic event, then staff would recommend that you approve this resolution that would approve a not-to-exceed amount of $80,000 of the American Rescue Plan Act funds for a patriotic community event and recognition of Independence Day, and also make a finding that the event would be categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. And I just want to add one other thing. The allocation being $80,000, if it costs less than $80,000 to execute this event, certainly, that remaining amount of funding would remain in that ARPA fund account. So that's the conclusion of my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you, Council, or City Manager Feeney. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Let's see, okay.
I'll wait till after the public comment.
Oh, yeah, well, after public comment?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So I'm going to hold my comment till after public comment, if there's any. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We do. We do have two raised hands on Zoom, and then we, I also have two written comments to read. So I'll start with the participants on Zoom.
Great.
And Lee Miller, you'll be allowed to unmute yourself. Just give me a moment. So you can now unmute yourself to speak, Lee Miller.
Thank you so much. My name is Lee Miller. I am with the Residents Against Illegal Fireworks in Sacramento County. I am the coordinator for that organization. So I'm here today to, to encourage the city council to vote no on Resolution Number 2023, just the portion for the aerial fireworks. So in 2021, the City of Citrus Heights passed an illegal fireworks social host ordinance. And as we know, the social host ordinance holds the host responsible for any kind of fireworks celebration that uses illegal fireworks. And the funds, so in my humble opinion, it would be better to use the funds that are being allocated for the aerial fireworks to enforce Citrus Heights Illegal Fireworks Social Host Ordinance. This illegal fireworks, as we all know, is a public safety issue. A fireworks show would also take resources such as the police department and the fire department away from protecting the community on the very night when a large number of calls are being made to dispatch, not only for illegal fireworks, but also for drunk parties and other activities taking place during the Fourth of July, along with the normal routine calls. So, and also planning an aerial fireworks show then takes a lot of planning and coordination between city staff, emergency services, vendors, and the list goes on. You also need to plan for parking, as the gentleman previously stated, control, crowd control, security, et cetera. And there are already many fireworks events in Sacramento County, such as Cal Expo, Elk Grove, Hagan Community Park, Folsom, Sacramento Waterfront, Carmichael, and that's just a short list of all the fireworks shows here in the county. So a daytime community event probably would be a lot better use of the money. I did see on the presentation that that's part of the suggestion. And, you know, having a community parade, community picnic, where the enforcement, where the reinforcement, the enforcement resources are not needed as much as they are during the day, the evening and the late night on the Fourth of July. People probably think that the public shows would deter illegal fireworks use. The problem is not solved because there's still a lot of illegal fireworks used being, being done in the Sacramento County despite the many shows. However, if you have any evidence that, you know, a, a aerial show does deter people from using this, please, I'd love to see that information, that information. I do urge the city council to, to reject the, this resolution. And the funds being used for the aerial show is not a priority, and it's a waste of the taxpayers' money. It could be better used, again, for the enforcement of the social host ordinance. The city should also, should be focusing on enforcing the illegal, the illegal fireworks social host ordinance and use the money for, for the enforcement of that. That's all I had. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Have the next comment, please.
The next is Kristy Wardlow. You can now unmute yourself to speak.
Hi, I just wanted to comment on a couple of things. One is, as an animal lover, I understand the fireworks issue and the impact that it has on our animals. I had a dog that was terrified, and it was horrific. But what I also know is, the fireworks displays, the professional ones, are over in, you know, 20 minutes or however long. The illegal fireworks, on the other hand, go on for hours. So that's, I agree with the previous caller on that. But what I also think is, when is the parade going to come back? The parade was a lot of fun, and I think it really got the community out and got community involvement. And I don't know if it was a victim of COVID or a victim of previous administrations and all of that. But I think the Fourth of July community parade is something important that should come back. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another comment? Is that it?
I have two written comments that I will go ahead and read.
Please.
The first one is from Alfred Sanchez. He states, "No way should we spend any money on fireworks show. We need to focus our money on better things." I am strongly opposed. Don't do it. Don't do it. I have another online city council speaker card from Kathy Milton, and she states, "I am completely against any funds used for this proposal. I concur with Linda Sue Arrowood in her letter to the Sentinel editor. Excerpts from her article, 'There are numerous ways to help people and businesses that should be considered before any entertainment funding that is not beneficial to the entire community. Perhaps grants for local businesses, assistance for our local homeless population, consideration, consider porta-potty areas, trust service, et cetera. Help our senior citizens with limited incomes by food or pay a utility bill. Fund a grant to assist our local marching band with expenses or a local nonprofit to benefit children. At the very least, fix some potholes or help those who need to remove storm-damaged trees and debris. Help fund something to assist police department personnel, like body armor or mental health assistance for police officers and their families. $80,000 is a frivolous expense. Pull the citizens and use the funds as intended.'"
Thank you very much. Any other public comment at this time? Seeing none. I will ask council members for their additional questions and comments. Let's start with Jana Karpinski-Costa. Do you have any questions or comments?
I do have comments. One of my questions answered when I had a private conversation with our city manager. So, you know, I just cannot support this. I, when he first suggested it, I says, "But what about the dogs?" As one caller mentioned her animals. So on behalf of the dogs, I'm not going to support it. On behalf of the nonprofits who rely on the sales of Safe and Sane, whose sales will probably decrease because people say, you know, "I don't need to buy Safe and Sane's. They'll march over to the City Hall." So that decreases the fundraising efforts of the nonprofits in our city. And for the Safe and Sane's, not that I love Safe and Sane's, but at least it does fund many nonprofit activities. And for the veterans, I know that there are some veterans who really, really, really suffer from fireworks. I suppose they could use earplugs, but, you know, that's not the answer. Just saying, "Go somewhere else for the night," isn't the answer. So, and I, and I just think that we take this money and flush it down the toilet. It's just gone in 20 minutes. And so I would hope we'd spend more money on things that would last longer than 20 minutes. There is many suggestions. I'm not against a patriotic event. I think we could have one at a smaller scale of spending. And I also prefer a daytime event where kids can really be, kids at 9:30, 10 o'clock, I think should be in bed, but maybe times have changed, but it's like sleepy times. So I'd rather see a daytime event, a little scaled down. I like the idea of the community picnic. I think that's neat. Get leatherbees out here with some ice cream trucks, you know, it's kind of, just something different, not fireworks. So I'm not going to support this.
Councilmember Middleton, questions or comments?
A couple comments. I'm a bit on the fence about this. You know, my dad did 25 years in the Army, retired sergeant major, suffered from PTSD. I have a child with autism. I don't have pets because I have children. So I get all of the concerns. And my, my goal is, if we do something like this, it's a 20-minute thing. But I think we should think about taking this step further and just saying, like, like some other jurisdictions, there are no fireworks in Citrus Heights outside of the one that if we were to put one on here in the city. That way, we alleviate the unnecessary between, you know, gosh, 10 days before the Fourth of July, and who knows how, whenever people decide to stop afterwards, where they're, they're doing this, and they're having our law enforcement officers out there trying to track down these random folks who are using fireworks after, after the curfew time, or they're not safe and sane. I think that it's a good way for us to build community in our city, and I think it's a really good expense. But like I said, I'm a little bit torn about it after hearing all the comments.
Councilmember Taff?
My family has always enjoyed the past fireworks shows that we had in Citrus Heights. And, and I'm also torn just hearing the feedback that we have from our community. So it's understandable that this is a hard decision. I really do feel that a community event is important. This is our 25th year of cityhood. I think it is right and proper to allocate funds for a fun community gathering around a patriotic event. So maybe fireworks are not the answer, but I believe community gathering is always a good, good idea.
Vice Mayor Daniels.
Yeah, a lot of good comments, a lot of good concerns. But I think it's just kind of important also to put it all into perspective of, you know, history and what it's all about, what the event's all about, and what the desire is from the event. You know, on the cost side, I don't even think it should be a consideration that this amount of money in the perspective of the city's budget amounts to much of anything. This is way less than 1% of the budget and will probably result in the largest amount of Citrus Heights residents coming together in a community event. The previous times when we had fireworks displays and stuff like that in Citrus Heights, they were hugely attended. They, they were off-the-chart successful. And again, you know, just even growing up as a child, you know, some of my best memories are, you know, fireworks displays, the ones blowing up in the sky. And so I, I think it's a, a need for our community, kind of coming out of COVID over the last couple of years and not being able to do anything, not being able to come together. I, I think we need to bring the community together. I think the community is, you know, begging to come together. And this is one of the ways that it can happen. And I think it's important to remember that if it was 20 minutes, there would be a better way to spend that amount of money in 20 minutes. But it's not, it's not. This is going to be an event that's going to go on for several hours, three, four hours maybe even. And again, there's going to be a lot of fun things that we're going to be able to do, a lot of fun things that children are going to be able to do to have memories. And so it's not a 20-minute-done thing. There's a lot of things that can happen during this event that'll bring a lot of joy to a lot of people. And so I think it's really important that we do it. I, I think it's also that important that we need to not necessarily look at reinventing the will. You know, this event, again, went on very successfully not that long ago, and there were a lot of people involved in it that can have a lot of good information about how we put it on. And so I think we need to be able to reach back and think about reaching back to some of those folks. I think that would be very important to do. So I'm highly supportive of it. I think that we're never going to be able to please everybody. There is going to be some concerns. My heart goes out to anybody that's going to have anxiety during this timeframe. But again, this is going to be a short period of the night where we're letting off fireworks that, in comparison to what we know is going to happen that night, is going to be, it's just going to be a very short time. And, and I'm not saying those words to minimize it all, but I'm just saying, us not doing this for that reason is not going to have much of a difference on the big picture of fireworks. No matter what we do, people are going to still let off illegal fireworks and whatnot. And so I, I think we can't not do this event for the community for those kind of reasons. And so, fully supportive and hoping this is something that I know the community wants because they've talked about it. I've had direct conversations with many community members who want this event, this type of event, and it's something that we need to bring back to Citrus Heights. We need to have an identity, too, not just Folsom, not just Rancho. You know, Citrus Heights has to have an identity, too, and this is one of those kind of events that can cause that.
Thank you. So I will sort of begin by saying, I kind of feel like we got off on the wrong foot here a little bit, because this is the culmination of a day-long event that would come at the end of the, of the, of the music and the, and the gathering in the park. And so the focus that it seems like the community has gotten is, well, this is all about fireworks, and we're spending $80,000 on fireworks. I don't think that's accurate. I think that there's a poor I think that there's a portion of this that we will be spending on fireworks. As I understand it, it was about $2,000 a minute, so it would be about somewhere between 30,000 and 40,000, not $80,000 for fireworks. So, but, and, and under, in listening to the community and, and, and understanding the concerns, certainly I will own that Kristi Wardlow is my wife, and she is one of the ones that made the public comment. We did have an animal who was absolutely inconsolable when it comes to fireworks. So I certainly understand that. I think that the suggestion that this type of fireworks display, that's not what the ordinance, what the social host ordinance was, that was not in the spirit of the social host ordinance. This was about the truly illegal fireworks, the M-80, the M-100s, those types of illegal fireworks that we have in our, in our neighborhoods, not the professional shows. And certainly Sacramento County adopted the social, or social host ordinance. And I can promise you, there will be many cities in this, in the county that will have professional displays. So with that, I'm reluctant about this because, and I, I don't, I want to see the entire event go forward. I want to see the music in the park and the, and the community gathering to bring this because we're still working on sort of unwinding this COVID mentality that we've had the last couple of years. So I think community events are absolutely very important and should be a priority for this community. But I will have to say I'm going to go with, my personal feeling is I think the fireworks display would be fine, but I'm going to listen to the folks in the city and say, yeah, probably can't support the fireworks portion of this. But hopefully we'll be able to modify this resolution to, to say that we want to move forward with the, with the, with the music and the festival without the fireworks. So. With that, any other additional comments? So can we have a roll call vote, please?
Well, we need a motion.
Oh, we need a motion. Sorry. May I have a motion?
I would move that we adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights, California, approving a not-to-exceed allocation of $80,000 of American Rescue Plan Fund Acts, excuse me, Fund, Act Funds for a patriotic community event in recognition of Independence Day and fining the event categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. And just to be specific, that that would, event would include fireworks displays.
Second?
Okay. And I would like to offer a secondary motion that we adopt the resolution to have the festival without the fireworks.
And I would second that.
The, the second motion would be voted on first, and we'll see if that passes. And then we can revert back to the first motion depending on how the second one is voted on.
Great. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Karpinski-Costa?
On Tim's motion, right. My answer is yes. Aye.
Councilmember Lopez Taft?
No.
Councilmember Middleton?
No.
Vice Mayor Daniels?
No.
And Mayor Schaefer?
Yes. Motion does not pass. We have a roll call vote on the first motion, please.
Councilmember Karpinski-Costa?
No.
Councilmember Lopez Taft?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
And Mayor Schaefer?
No. Motion passes, looks like.
Correct.
All right. Can I have the next item, please?
Next item is Department Reports Number 13. The subject is Overview of New State Housing Laws 2023, and it's by the Community Development Department.
Good evening, council members. Allison Bermudez is here with the Planning Division. And tonight's item is just to go over a few of the numerous housing laws that have been passed that went into effect January of this year that were passed by the state. There is over 41, and I'm going to go over every one individually. No, just kidding. I caught your laugh. So I just picked a few that really pertain to Citrus Heights and pertain to projects or things that you will be seeing down the pipeline that are impacted by these new laws. So we're going to cover about six or seven of them. I'm not going to go into great detail in depth of them because it would be overwhelming, but I just want to really give you a high-level review and understanding of the things that have been coming down. So as mentioned, there's been 40, about 41 housing-related bills that have been passed as the state continues to work through the housing crisis that's been going on for a number of years. Most of these did take effect January of this year. There are a few that we'll talk about that go into effect in July. And the scope of these are very wide-ranging. They go from paperwork, reporting that we do to the state, to addressing the expansion of a home with a bedroom, to larger projects. So they're very wide-ranging. There's basically six themes that we'll talk about on these housing legislation. One is housing in the commercial areas or non-residential areas. That's a very hot topic that you'll see some significant bills related to developing housing in those commercial areas. Some changes to streamlining, which is the, the time that it takes to process an application or a permit. They've enacted some new legislation on that. Parking reform, that's probably the one you'll be the most interested in. We'll talk about that. And as we've seen the past several years, they continue to massage this accessory dwelling unit regulations. I will talk about density bonuses and then some of that reporting requirement that we have to adjust. So the first two are very similar bills, AB 2011 and SB 6. As I kind of talk about some of their highlights, they sound the same. There are just some significant minor differences to them. Typically, when this happens, the legislature will put the bill together and just pass one bill. In this case, they did not do that. So there are two separate bills relating to housing in commercial areas. The first one being AB 2011, it kind of tiered off SB 35, if you remember that from several years ago. Creates a ministerial process for housing projects that are developed. These are multifamily projects that are developed in commercial zones. It does give them a SEQA exemption, so eliminates some of the environmental review process. And so these projects, if they want to accept the conditions with the bill, they do get some advantages for quicker processing, less environmental review, and then can develop these multifamily units in commercial zones. So just to pick on some of the highlights of AB 2011, if the developer submits an application using this, they are committing to paying prevailing wage for the workers to develop the project. They are agreeing to providing some below-market rate or BMR housing, or what we refer to as affordable housing, which is agreeing to restrict the sale or the rent of those units to people of certain, of restricted incomes at different levels. So they are committing to that with that project should they want to do a project under AB 2011. If that, that would be 100% affordable project. That means every unit would agree. And then they get, there's also some conditions. If they didn't want to do 100%, then they could do a 15%. They must meet the density requirements that, of that zone. They must meet that or exceed it. They cannot build less units than what the zoning allows. And then the other point of that is that there's objective standards that must be met. And this is part of the reason I'm bringing this one before you is this legislation, along with a few others, talk about these objective standards. And this is something we haven't brought before you yet, but we will be soon, is developing what the state is using as objective standards, which really takes out the, what we call the gray area in projects, especially in design of a building or the placement of a building, sometimes interpreting the codes and ordinances. There are some interpretation differences. But the state now requires us to have these objective standards where it's very clearly defined that somebody could read the standards and could develop a project based upon what's provided there without any subjectivity by us. So that will be coming to you down the road, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. And then they've shortened the timeframes that allows us staff to review the projects and to notify the applicant of any inconsistencies. They have shortened what we can do. This bill has some very strict site eligibility limits. So kind of big picture, I don't suspect that we will see a lot of projects, if any, under AB 2011. But it does, just wanted to bring it to your attention, especially in regards to objective standards because you'll see that theme throughout other bills. This one does not come into effect until July, and it does sunset in 2033. And then its partner bill, SB 6, very similar. It allows multifamily housing in the commercial zone without having to rezone the property. It does not have the affordable housing component. It does, does have the prevailing wage component, but in addition to the prevailing wage, it requires the skilled and trained workforce component, which basically requires them to hire union workers. And it does not provide that SEQA exemption. So very similar bills with just a little bit different twists on the labor portion of it. This again starts in July of 2023 and will sunset in 2033. In the streamlining section, we talk about AB 2234. It establishes what we call a shot clock, which is that timing, the approval process, timing that development projects must be processed in. We're very familiar with this in the planning world. It's been part of our processing of applications for a long time. It's been spelled out in law how long we can take to process an application. Well, they have extended that now into the post-entitlement world. So once a project goes through planning and gets reviewed, has all their entitlements or they're approved development permit, and they get to the building permit side, they get to the improvement side, to the grading side, now those shot clocks are also impacting that side of the development. So this bill outlines those time limits, and these are specific to residential projects. And this is all in regard to helping to speed up housing production. This is the one that you're probably the most interested in. You might have heard about this. It's been talked about quite a bit in the news, but it's AB 2097, which really establishes a no parking minimum, so in certain areas. So no parking minimums on development projects, and this is residential or commercial projects, within a half mile of a major transit stop. So what that means is that we can no longer require the parking requirements or have minimum requirements on the development to meet parking standards if their site is within this half-mile distance of this major transit stop as identified in the bill. It does apply to both residential and commercial projects. There are very few exceptions that we can make to require parking. And if we find that, then, I mean, in theory, would a developer develop something without parking? Probably not a good idea in our community. We're pretty suburban. People rely on our cars, but it, it could happen.
Allison, can I interrupt you really quick?
Yes, absolutely.
So before we get too far away from this point, I think the logic here is that there's no parking minimum because the assumption would be that if you are close enough to use public transit, that you wouldn't need a car.
Correct.
And this is just one example, I'm going to just comment here just a bit. Just one example where this is a state mandate where one-size-fits-all. And
It doesn't.
It's not. So, thank you, sorry.
That's okay. And to follow up on that, this major transit stop that's identified in the law, it doesn't even have to be up and running. It can be a planned transit stop. So yes, they say within a transit stop, but it may not be there yet. So I just want to show you the map. SAOCOG has been a great partner in this in identifying where these locations would be for us because this major transit stop is identified and the bill really comes out of our transportation plan that's adopted regionally. And so the red spots show existing or planned major transit stops meeting the definition by the law. And so basically you see it's Sunrise Boulevard, and so everything within a half a mile of those stops would fall with, and allow this exemption. So Sunrise Mall is one of them. And as I mentioned, I don't think development in this community, you know, would come in and build a bunch of stores without available parking. But just so you know that, you know, it could happen. Maybe some smaller projects would take advantage of it if they're having a parking restriction.
I don't know why they'd want to build a house if it had no parking yet or a place that says, "So you want to move here, but you can't park."
Right. Then the other topic is on the density bonus. You might recall that every year we pretty much bring back to you a zoning code update that includes updating our density bonus section of zoning as the state every year amends this. And the density bonus, just to remind you, is an allowance for a developer who's going to build a residential project. If they commit to a certain number of the units to be affordable, they're allowed certain concessions, meaning that they can, if they have a lot that will allow 20 units to be built, but they commit to five or 10 or whatever number is units to be for affordable or people of restricted incomes, then they're allowed to maybe build 30 units. Maybe the height limit is 30 feet in that zone, but because they're providing affordable units, they could go to 40 feet. So there's a whole variety of concessions that they're allowed if they wanted to commit the project to affordable requirement. So they have once again amended the state density bonus law. They've added some new introductions of types of housing that could be considered under density bonus that were not. There was a new concept called shared housing building. They also did include a base density definition in state density in the law, which really means that whatever the zoning, the density for that zone is and the general plan states, if those are not the same, they get the density, whatever number is the highest. They also get additional concessions. So currently they get three concessions. Some of those things that I talked about, increased height, maybe reduced setback, they get that currently. But if the project is in an area of low vehicle miles traveled, that VMT number that we hear about, then they get an additional concession. So basically, there's several things like that. I just wanted to give you a flavor of the type of things that are coming down that we're working through, making sure our ordinances are current and up to date on those topics. And projects that we bring to you, you know, in the future are compliant with these new regulations. As I mentioned, accessory dwelling units, probably the most successful legislation that they've passed in 2017 on accessory dwelling units is for our community, we've seen the biggest increase in housing in this area. And that's where they relaxed the regulations for accessory dwelling units. They eliminated the requirements for specific types of permits for them. They reduced setbacks. And for us, that's probably been the biggest impact. We used to see probably maybe one or two a year, but since 2017, it's increased 2030. So I think we're up to 70-some units that we have permitted since 2017. So it is a very successful program. But they have changed it a little bit more this year. Just to clarify, some of the height limits, the ADUs are allowed. Currently, it's 16 feet. Now they, some of them on certain lots can go to 18 feet. And then you can also have additional two feet for a roof pitch. So many layers. But we will clarify our codes, get them up to date, and bring those back to you in the future.
Thank you, Allison.
And there's some of the reporting, one more of the reporting requirements that we have to deal with when we do our annual progress report on our general plan updates. And you'll be seeing that in front of you in April. We'll have additional reporting requirements in that to accommodate some of this new legislation. So basically, the three things I want to point out is that term objective standards that I talked about in some of those bills. You will be seeing that before you through a couple documents, a couple programs that we'll bring back. Retail for rooftops is one. And so we'll be devising those objective standards and bringing that to you. And housing in the commercial zone is, is new in legislation. But the city itself, we have allowed that for a couple years because we have so much retail. So not a big change for us, but you could see more projects in there at an increased density. And then this, projects with the restricted And then this, projects with restricted incomes, you know, will be afforded several quicker paths to the end of travel to get their projects approved. So you'll be seeing some things coming down the pipeline. We're going to have an affordable housing program guideline that we're bringing back to you in February. That way, when we have a project that's taking advantage of that, our guidelines are there and in place to make sure that we're going on the right track. So those are some things coming down the pack, down the road, to be consistent with all these great things that the state has sent us. And I would like to shout out to Ryan, who is very, him and his office, who helped us very much trying to understand and peel back the layers of this very complex legislative session. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from Council? Councilmember Middleton? Councilmember Karpinski-Costa?
I've got a quick one, just as a nutshell. I know you want to do it later. What's Rooftail, because I'm new? What's retail to rooftops?
Retail to rooftops is the way to convert commercial space. It's the name of our program that we're going to be converting some vacant space.
Buildings.
Parking lots. Could be a parking lot, could be the building, but converting that to housing. So like, you know, happen, like Grand Oaks is kind of an empty big center. Maybe they could introduce housing in there, and it's going to be the program that's going to outline how that would work.
Councilmember Taff, any questions or comments? Vice Mayor? Okay, so, could I ask you to scroll back to AB 2011?
Yep. That's probably the first one, yep.
So, in California, we have schizophrenia in our legislation here, because when we look at the, on the one hand, we're requiring prevailing wages, but on the other hand, we're have, we're requiring below-market rate for affordable housing. I don't know how you can drive up building costs by requiring prevailing wage and then tell the builder, you have to sell the property below market value.
Common core math.
Yes, it is a strange state we live in. So, that's my only comment. Thank you.
I agree.
So the next item is city manager items. Sorry, don't mean to step on you, Amy, but I just want to remind Council that since the city manager items are not agendized, we really can't comment on what the city manager is about to share with us, because that turns into a discussion that's not permitted by the Brown Act. So just want to remind Council that we're about to hear city manager items, but it's really not open for discussion from the D S. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Schaefer, Vice Mayor Daniels, Councilmember Ashley Feeney, your city manager, once again, with a couple of brief updates here. Go to the next slide. I think at our last meeting, we were talking about all the impacts of the storm, and certainly our team has been very hard at work with our General Services Department on the pothole repairs. And so just I wanted to let the community know, we're very active out there. There's currently, you see cold patch or cutback, and these are really temporary repairs. We have to use a cold patch right now just because of the temperature and the saturation of the road base. So you can use the cold patch during the low temperature, so it deals with the immediate issue relative to a pothole. But the more permanent solution for potholes are these mill and fills, and this is where you actually use a hot mix. So, think if you're, you know, sanding something or prepping something, you're usually having to get the edges right. And so here, the application, actually, you grind down the pavement edges, exposure in a larger area, and then you actually fill it back with the hot mix asphalt. So it's a much better method in which you use to repair the potholes, but it is, depending on weather. But the good news is, we are expecting in February, if we continue to have some of these trends, like we're seeing where we have some warmer hours of the day, that we'll be able to get back in there and use this hot mix with the mill and fill operation. So our team is ready to go on that, and we know where we're going to go to, you know, fix those problematic potholes. You can see with the cold patch application here, that the team's definitely been hard at work, and I really appreciate all their efforts that our General Services Department Director Regina Cave and her entire team has been doing to ensure that we're getting on those potholes, because the rain was really tough this time. And I know a lot of my colleagues in the region and throughout the state are dealing with some of the same issues, so just glad our team is on it, and just want to give an update that there are going to be the mill and fill repairs coming here very soon. And that concludes my updates.
Next item, please.
Next item is items requested by council members or future agenda items.
Councilmember Middleton? Taff?
It's not a, maybe I should have brought this up during council comments, it's not. But I just wanted to remind people that I got a thing in the mail when I got here tonight, that Phil the Boot is going to be over at the corner of Sunrise and Greenback, filling the boot starting February 3rd. So, if you drive by, they always have their little boot out, and they collect money for the Burn Institute, and it's a thing. Do we all know that Dave Mitchell announced his retirement? I don't know if we want to, you know, send him a goodbye card or something that we might want to...
I would second that.
Recognize, recognize some presentation to him for all the work that he's shared with us in our dual, but he funded, he was a partner in my senior health fair for over 11 years, so I owe him that much, I'm sore.
So can I clarify? Would you like a resolution to recognize Dave?
Come up with some, you know, you can come up with something cost-effective, you know, that we can ask him to come and recognize his good works.
Well, I'd be happy to second that motion.
All right.
And bring that as an agenda item, please.
We shall make it so.
Okay.
Mitchell's been a terrific partner.
And then finally, you know, last meeting, we approved Reach to have a community rent-free potluck?
We haven't done that yet.
Oh, I thought we did.
It's going to be a future agenda item.
I thought we approved that they could have their potluck rent-free.
We will have that item coming into future calendar that'll be on a consent calendar.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, FYI, they're planning to have the potluck on, hang on, March 13th.
I'm, I thank you, Councilmember Karpinski-Costa. I'm aware of that.
Put it on your calendar, so you can march March 13th.
Actually going to be having a future meeting here in the near future with some representatives from Reach to talk more about that.
Okay, well, I got to put things on my calendar now, because things fill up fast.
Okay. All right. Vice Mayor Daniels, you would like to offer something?
Just real quick, I just want to applaud this Council and the ability for us to have differing opinions, express those differing opinions, having votes that are four to one and three to two, and still walk away, you know, and be professional. That's not always been the case, and so I just want to say thank you to the rest of the council members for having, first, the courage to speak up with differing opinions, and also to vote with them, too.
Thank you. All right, so I'm not seeing any new items, so what's the next item?
There are no further...
All right. Bye. Let's see, at 7:40, 7:38, I'm adjourning this meeting. Thank you for coming, everyone.